We should have everybody here.
Mayor, you are live on YouTube and this meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. I will call the city council meeting to order at 6:31 on November 8, 2021. And for the real call, for the record, all council members are present. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
I second.
Great. All right. So Vice Mayor Garangar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dury?
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson?
Aye.
Councilmember Coop?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so we will adopt the agenda. So do we have any comments on closed session items only?
If any members of the public would like to comment on closed session items, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. There are no raised hands.
All right, so we will go adjourn to closed session and expect to be back at 7 o'clock. Thank you. For any members of the public who are just tuning in, the city council is in closed session and expects to begin open session at 7 p.m. Thank you. For any members of the public who are just tuning in, the city council is in closed session and expects to begin open session at 7 p.m. Thank you.
All right, it is now seven o'clock and I will call this meeting back to where we were just back from closed session. And there was no reportable action. And we don't have all of our council members here. So I will wait for a council member and jury to join us.
I just promoted him, he should be in just a moment.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm here, but it's not allowing me to start my video.
Okay. Um, well, do you want, you want to continue to work on this, right? Do you think Suzanne, is there a way to allow him to turn his video on?
It was on at 6:30, so I don't know what's happened.
Yeah. Carl, if you maybe want to try turning off, you know, the video or your webcam and then turning it back on. That's just a, a general thing I try with computers sometimes. Everything looks fine on my end.
Okay, I'm gonna do that by actually closing out, so maybe I'll be back in two minutes.
Okay, we'll wait for you.
Okay, let's try again.
Yes, thank you, Carl. Thank you Suzanne. We can't hear you.
No, I apologize, sorry for that, and thanks for helping out.
No problem. All right, so we are back in closed session with no reportable comment. And we will go to public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda tonight?
Yes, Mayor, there is a hand raised. I'll bring in David Clark. If anyone else would like to speak at this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom.
Good, I'm getting better at this. Hi, everybody. I have a couple, a couple of comments about volunteering in Lafayette. And I submitted a page, a page and a half written comment, and feel free to take a look at that. But in, in general, as you know, volunteering is, is important in Lafayette. We almost depend on it as a city. The staff is intentionally kept at a low numbers. And sometimes it's stretched thin. And we've got a very professional group of volunteers. And my particular comments are with respect to the volunteers that are involved with the Park Trails and Rec Commission and the Creeks Commission Committee. In, in particular, with respect to parcels property that become available on sometimes very short notice in the city. That may be, may be considered for a downtown park or potentially a creekside trail. And two of those came up recently at Wilkinson Lane into the Nut Factory. That they say, they sort of came and went in the blink of a blink of an eye, at least in terms of the conditions changing. They were there and then they were gone. And I'd like to suggest a couple of things I think might improve the situation in terms of communication at the last minute between the volunteers and, and staff. So that maybe we can be able to succeed on some of those opportunities that are otherwise fleeting. And I wrote these in the, the item that I submitted, and I have, I have four of them. There, there may be 400, but I thought of four. There's a list called the trigger review list, and it's a list that gets filled out, I think, when an applicant applies for review, I think, before the planning commission. But in any event, we could consider adding another item, a line item to the trigger review list, something to the effect of, is there a possibility the parcel could be used for a downtown park? Or a creekside trail? If yes, then we could send a notice. I mean, I think this is all legal. I'm only talking about public notices. Send a notice to the Chair of the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission and/or the Creeks Committee, depending on, on what the item is, as that's appropriate. So put, put those volunteers on notice. Then authorize the chairs of those two, either the commission, the committee in this case, to unilaterally be able to create a task force. I e, hopefully without waiting for the next meeting of that particular committee or commission. Because we can lose two, three weeks right there before we can create a task force to address these things on a short-term basis. Finally, with respect to that, is authorize any documents, any public documents that are generated at the staff level to be sent to the appropriate volunteer. So they're aware of what's going on. Then in addition to those three, a fourth one that occurs to me is we might be able to recruit, we should recruit, a volunteer real estate broker or agent that we could go to on short notice. That might be able to intervene on, in some of these real estate type situations. I'm running out of time, so I'll leave it there, but I think some of those may help address the, the timing issue. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
There are no additional hands raised, Mayor. Oh, actually, that's not true. Grace Dixon would like to speak, so I'll bring them in now. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. And for folks that are new to watching council meetings on Zoom, we do now have a timer that will count down the three minutes that each person is allotted to speak under public comment.
Hello, City Council, this is Grace Dixon. As you can hear from my windshield wipers, I just pulled over in the pouring rain. So I did want to agree with David Clark's comments and just encourage in these fast-changing times with, right now, we have limited services. We have a lot of volunteers. And I would like to encourage the City Council to entertain the forming of either a special downtown parkland and creek acquisition task force, so we can just be more nimble in situations like this. It, it, I, it is, it was painful to me to lose the Wilkinson property because it was an ideal creek site. And it was an amazing central property that would have been great for the vibrancy of downtown. So whatever learning lesson we can learn from Wilkinson and the other six or five parkland acquisition properties that we lost just this year alone. Whatever lessons we can learn as a community, I would like to learn them quickly and turn that around. It's so that we can be more nimble and, and change the process that obviously has not worked for us to acquire property to date. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No, thank you very much, Grace.
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Right, we'll go on to the Youth Commission presentation.
Hello.
Hello.
Is Sam Ratha here?
Here she is.
Awesome. All right, I think that is everyone. Yes. Well, good evening, Lafayette City Council. In classic Youth Commission fashion, we have, the Youth Commission has created a video for their update this year. So I will go ahead and queue that up right now, and then they can, they may have a couple of things after that as well and can take any questions.
We are the L Y C and this is our 2021 year update. As this year comes to an end, the L Y C was faced with the challenge to get creative with their events and follow the local health guidance. Unfortunately, this means we were not able to do our annual haunted house, but we were still able to serve the community throughout the year.
Last year in November and December, the L Y C held the Toys for Tots Strad. We received hundreds of toys that were donated to support local families.
Next, in partnership with a brighter day, the L Y C put on a teen talent showcase where teens could share their talent and get entered in to win scholarships from a brighter day. In addition, each performer and attendee received stress and depression resources from a brighter day.
In April, the L Y C put on the superhero scavenger hunt around Lafayette. In partnership with several businesses, families were tasked to solve the clues and support downtown businesses along the way. Once completed, they were entered in to win the grand prize.
In May, the L Y C put on an outdoor movie night on the rink. Attendees were spaced out and we all watched onward. We even had an awesome flyover from the SpaceX satellites.
Instead of the haunted house this year, L Y C hosted an outdoor movie night featuring Coco. These events have been a hit for families and look forward to planning another one for the spring.
Recently, the L Y C partnered with the Lafayette Community Foundation by running games at their family fun fest on Halloween.
In addition to our events, the L Y C has enjoyed being a part of the general plan advisory committee and to be a voice for youth while on it. We hope to get more youth involved in the general plan process in the upcoming year.
Currently, the L Y C is holding a toy drive through December 10th. Toys can be dropped off at the Lafayette Community Center Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And will be donated to Toys for Tots.
The L Y C is also putting on another teen talent showcase for the end of this year and is now taking video submissions. Follow the link on the screen.
In addition, we will be looking for more opportunities to serve and support in 2022. Please let us know how we can help. Make sure to follow us on Instagram and Facebook to stay up to date.
Though this year was another different year than years past, it was a great way to get creative with our events. We are looking forward to coming up with new creative ways to support our community in the coming year.
It's the L Y C. Thanks for watching.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing. That was really fun. I'm so impressed. You actually did do a lot more than you maybe thought you were gonna get done. And I appreciate every single one of the events that you took the effort in. I'm sure had to pivot five times to make it actually happen the way you wanted it to happen. But I appreciate all the efforts that, that you have done. Right, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I just.
Cancel from Dawson, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much. There's so much energy that goes into what you do and across the year, which was a challenging one, just getting back to, you know, any kind of semblance of normal. Pretty amazing what you've accomplished too, as, as you say, serve and support the community. Thank you so much.
That's my gaga.
Ditto what everyone else has said about all the great things that you've been doing and all of the activities and ways you touch the community. I did have a question. You mentioned at the end, I can't remember who it was, that for us to let you know if there are ways to help. And I guess what ideas, do you have questions for us? What ideas do you have in ways that we could help support the Youth Commission? If you have them.
We didn't actually have anything in, in mind particularly. But I think the important thing is to really continue supporting our efforts and really valuing the voice of the youth. Like, I know in the G-PAC, in the, the city, other city fairs, in, in youth events, I think all of it is really important. And I'm so glad that we have this commission and this opportunity to really get involved in our city. And I hope we can keep supporting that for the next set of youth.
Great, thank you, Nafah.
All right, so I do, oh, cancel five o'clock.
Oh, yeah, just, I was really impressed by the video and seeing just the so many things you guys have been working on. It's really impressive. So thank you for engaging in what's been a tough year to be out there. And clearly your spirits were, were up there and hopefully next year will be a better year to do more things. But you, you seem like to made, you made a lot out of this past year, so congratulations and thank you for doing that.
Yes, so, um, I guess we do take public comment, right? So let's go to public comment.
The first public comment is from Grace Dixon. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Good evening again. I, I wanted to express my sincere appreciation to Stephen Heisman and the entire Lafayette Youth Commission on behalf of the Lafayette Community Foundation. We decided to have a very last-minute event on Halloween. And it was a simple phone call to Stephen. I said, we're gonna do this. We want to do this for the families. Are you in? What can you do? And he said, we're in, we're, we're bringing the team, we're gonna bring some carnival games. And that was all that needed to happen. He, he showed up with his team. They were amazing. They were positive, they were professional, they set up more than enough games. We had 320 people in three hours, and they brought their own prizes. And their, his team were always smiling and they encouraged even the tiniest of children who were trying to play those games. The, the, the team was incredible. So anyway, I cannot say enough thanks to, to the Lafayette Youth Commission and Stephen Heisman on behalf of the Lafayette Community Foundation. Thank you so much.
Oh, terrific. Great to hear. Any other speakers?
The next public speaker is Lauren McCabe-Herpik. If anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Hi, City Council. I was joining for other reasons tonight, but to kind of echo Grace's appreciation of the Youth Commission, I also wanted to just say thank you so much for an awesome outdoor movie night a couple of weeks ago. Being able to go out and see Coco with my family, we just had a great time. And so it's those simple, it's simple events like that that make Lafayette and our community great. So I just wanted to say bravo. Thank you so much for putting that together. And I definitely look forward to doing more. So let's do more of those when the rain is over. I would say outdoor movie nights on a consistent basis, the Herpiks would be there every time. Especially when it's Coco.
Right, thank you. Any other public comment?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Great, so, um, so I, I do have one thing that I can think of. We are, the Transport, Transcirt Commission is going to start meeting with their traffic safety consultants around schools. is going to start meeting with their traffic safety consultants around schools. And so if you want to meet with them, you know, look, we should send you guys the agenda once we've decided the schools. And maybe we can reach out to you, Youth Commission, and you could join whichever ones you could. That would be great. So we'll make sure to circle back with you folks. Any other comments? Any other comments? No, thank you guys so much. Thanks for everything you do. All right, so now we have our consent calendar. Does any, do any council members want to pull any items from consent? I am not seeing any. Are, do any members of the public want to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Mayor, there is a hand raised. I'll bring in David Clark now. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Mayor Candell, I would like to pull item 6G like George, please.
6G, okay, thank you. Does anybody else?
I'm sorry, it's 8G.
No, I just say 8G. Okay, 8G, right. Do we have any other hands?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, so can I, I will enter him a motion. Councilmember Endery.
I move adoption of items eight through F on the consent calendar.
Okay. All right, so I'll take a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Geringer.
Aye.
Councilmember Endery.
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson.
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. So we will approve all of A through F and we will pull item 8G for later. Okay, we'll go on to so item 9A and I'm going to log in on my thing so I can share a presentation. So Suzanne, will you promote me, the second Susan Candell?
Sure thing.
As I come in. It is launching. Great, and I will share my screen. Great, so here's my presentation on the constitutional amendment that will be modifying land use and planning to be a municipal affair only. So why is this being brought up? So questions to ponder. Who is better suited to set zoning and other land use regulations for your town? Is it the legislature in Sacramento? Or do you think it's local cities and counties? I went too fast. One of the big issues that we're finding right now is that the Sacramento Legislature is scapegoating cities instead of collaborating with us to solve what we all admit is we are in an affordable housing crisis. And right now they are blaming the cities and they're assuming the housing shortage has been caused by local regulations. Whereas there is ample proof that it was the, around 10 years ago, when the state stopped the redevelopment monies coming back to cities, this, it was the biggest source of money to build affordable housing in California. And that was around 10 years ago. And now we're here 10 years later, we have an affordable housing crisis. And instead of working with the cities again, they've instead taken the tack that it's the city's fault. And what's, what was happening is that we're all having to do these massive upzonings to meet the new RENA requirements. Unfortunately, housing actually costs cities more money than the revenue brings in. People don't normally know that. And so our city, we are literally on the lowest end of bringing money in when we develop housing. And especially, you know, housing, single family housing is, we get 6.6 cents per dollar on each housing unit that we build. And so we are at the bottom of, you know, California is low and then Lafayette is at the bottom. Supply versus demand is not a natural law that applies to housing supply. And so our problem is that who helps us fund our public safety, our water, our schools, our roads, our transportation, our housing jobs imbalance, our park and rec resources and our maintenance when we build all this, all the more housing that we're going to be slated to build. So the last four years of housing bills up and beyond RENA, we know AB 2923, that's the upzoning of the VART lots. SB 35, ministerial approval of the massive developments, SB 827, unlimited density near bus stops. SB 50, unlimited density near bus stops and transit. SB 1120, required lot splits. SB 9, we just got, required lot splits. SB 10, the opt-in tenure departments. And so basically there's 70 or more bills and they're not done yet. We have some early news from some legislators that the son and daughter of SB 9 and SB 10 are being worked on at the moment. And so SB 9 passed, so what now? This constitutional amendment to make zoning and land use locally controlled rather than being controlled by the state. It was first introduced by Assembly Member Al Mertucci and co-authored by our own State Senator Stephen Glazer. They pulled, they tried to get ACA 7, which is this constitutional amendment, to have the legislature put it on the ballot without having to get all of the signatures. Well, that didn't get any traction at all in our legislature. And so now we've got the Our Neighborhood Voices initiative in the works. And so it's the Brand Wong Mendoza Tripartisan Land Use Initiative. And it'll let the voters of California decide whether the state legislature will determine local zoning from Sacramento or their local cities and counties. And so it was filed with the Attorney General on August 25th in time to make the November 22 ballot. There was a 30-day comment period and a lot of, and then the final document, it was modified and then submitted on October 1st. On November 1st, that was last Monday, one week ago, we received a title and summary from the Attorney General. And now we've got to get 1.3 million signatures by April 30th, 2022. It's going to require probably about 1.3 million signatures for a lot of reasons. We only need 900,000, but we get the 1.3 because there's a lot of reasons. In order to validate it, we won't have time, so we need to get far more. And we also need around three, I would say three to $4 million to qualify. So this is actually what is going, if we get this on the ballot, this is what it will say. It says, it says exactly, provides the land, we don't have the number for the bill yet because we haven't got it on the ballot yet, but this is what it'll say. It says, provides that local land use and zoning laws override conflicting state laws. It's an initiative constitutional amendment. It says, provides that the city and county land use and zoning laws, including local housing laws, override all conflicting state laws except in circumstance, certain circumstances related to three areas of statewide concern. One, the California Coastal Act of 1976. Two, the sighting of power plants. Or three, development of water, communication, or transportation infrastructure projects. It prevents state legislature and local legislative bodies from passing laws invalidating voter-approved local land use or zoning initiatives. So the city councils can't override referendums. It also prohibits the state from changing, granting, or denying funding to local governments based on their implementation of this measure. And the summary of estimate by ledge analyst and director of finance of fiscal impact on state and local governments is the fiscal impact of the measure depend on future decisions by the cities and counties and therefore are unknown. So that is actually what will be on the ballot when we get it on the ballot. So there's many of us that believe that SB 9 and SB 10 is a massive handout to speculators and developers. We believe that and what, some of the biggest reasons why is that they have, SB 9 and SB 10 have zero affordable units and circumvent and get around CEQA. There are massive national and international investments into single-family homes and it's creating a generation of renters rather than homeowners. The New York Times covered it on October 8th in an article called Where the Suburbs End, the NBC Nightly News with Lester Holt. He even taught, there was a whole special on that about housing giants in Georgia, just, you know, buying out from home numbers. And now Invitation Homes is the single biggest owner or single-family rental houses in the country. So the proponents, so there are five people who are the, actually on this bill and how it says the Brand Wong Mendoza, it's because three of them are local electeds. And if any of them are local electeds, their names have to appear on the initiative. So the first one is John Heath. He's the president of the United Homeowners Association in LA. And he is also an affordable housing builder. Jovita Mendoza, oh Hernandez, oh, wrong name, Jovita Mendoza, who is a council member of City of Brentwood and she is actually on this call. And I'm going to be bringing her in in just a minute. Dennis Richards is a former planning commissioner of City and County of San Francisco. Peggy Wong is the mayor of the City of Verbalinda and Bill Brand is the mayor of the city of Redondo Beach. So many cities are signing resolutions like are on our city agenda tonight. The contract cities of California are expected to sign this week. Cities of Redondo Beach, Oceanside, Torrance, and others have either passed or on their agendas for this week. Many individual city council members have already endorsed and many other homeowner groups and organizations have already endorsed it. So if you go to ourneighborhoodvoices.org, you can sign up and learn about the initiative and help volunteer and donate. I am actually having a meeting this Thursday, November 11th at 6 o'clock, not 7 o'clock, as I've started to email out. If you are interested in coming to this information meeting as well as learning how to be a signature gatherer, please email me and I'll email you back from my personal email because all of this is done outside of my city duties. And that is the end of this presentation. So Suzanne, there is Jovita Mendoza who should be on a one, if you could bring her in, in case any of you guys have any questions for me about the initiative or, you know, anything that I've, I've talked about. If you, she can answer questions as well. All right, so does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Endery.
Yeah, just some information and additional questions. In the first page of the materials you provided in the council, you say that with respect to the initiative, in addition, it expressly protects CEQA fair housing and non-discrimination bills, et cetera, protects citizen initiatives. How does it expressly protect CEQA fair housing and non-discrimination?
Okay, so in your packet.
Mentioned anywhere in the initiative.
In the initiative, if you look in the intent, right at the beginning, in the actual initiative, which is in your packet, right?
Oh, are you talking about the preamble?
In the preamble. That's how
That's, that's not, that's
That's intent. It, that's how laws are written. And this is what, and you can see also in your packet, at the very end, there is a, an analysis by our, an attorney who wrote in about this issue. Tons of people have been asking about this. But how these laws and how these initiatives are written, this is what I'm finding out from another attorney who works for the Attorney General. In the preamble, it does matter. That's where we have put in intent. You can't, if every single law had to put, every single piece of law that it includes, our, our, our city government, our California state government would have a million mile long set of laws. This is how these are written. You can't include them all. That's why you put it in the intent and says it's CEQA and all other laws that apply. That's, that's how initiatives are written. And that was the explanation of why you don't actually put it in into the, because if you had to include every single other law in every law, it would be enormous.
Well, I'll just disagree with that. It wouldn't be necessary. I'm looking at the preamble now.
So it says, include, purpose measure to ensure that all decisions regarding local land use controls, including zoning laws and regulations, are made by the affected communities in accordance with applicable law, including but not limited to CEQA. The California Fair Employment and Housing Act, prohibitions against discrimination, and affirmatively furthering fair housing. But before that, you put all applicable law. So it's all applicable law and these, because these aren't land use and zoning, they stay. The initiative only touches land use and zoning.
We'll have to get our own legal opinion on that. Because I think that when it says, including but not limited to, that leaves you completely at sea in terms of what's intended to be protected and, and what isn't. And I know I read the opinion carefully. I'm not sure I agree with it. You know, we're hearing this, we're discussing it for the first time, so let's, let's leave that issue. In terms of the, I think it's the press release that Our Neighborhood Voices put out last November 2nd. It states in the paragraph towards the bottom of the first page, the measure will protect the community's ability to shape local growth. And then it goes on, require developers to produce more affordable housing. Let me just stop there. How does the initiative require developers to produce more affordable housing?
It allows local cities to, instead of being limited by the fractions that we can get now, we would able to, we would be able to require more. Right now, we're not allowed to build more than what the state has said we can, right? And so it allows us
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
No, like in the density bonus laws, there's all these, there's all those calculations of how many they have to put in. We can make that however we want.
If we wanted to build an affordable project, what would stop us? Would state law stop us?
If, if, if the developer doesn't agree to do it, they only have to build the minimum. And we have no say. Right? They have to agree. They can just say, no, we're only going to put in 10 because that's all state law says. Even if, but if they're agreeable, absolutely. But if they don't want to, they don't have to. That's the way the state laws work right now.
Okay, I'll just ask questions now. And it goes on, say, the measure will protect the community's ability to contribute to the costs associated with new housing. What does that mean?
I'm looking here. What does it say?
The measure will, there's four verbs after the measure will, there's four clauses with verbs. So it would read the measure protect the community's ability to contribute to the cost associated with new housing. Require developers to contribute to the cost associated with new housing.
The state has also put limits on how many fees we can charge.
Okay.
And we would be in control of the fees that we can charge. I hope Jovita has her hand up.
I, I think I'm muted. Let me try my videos.
Yeah.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I appreciate you considering this resolution tonight. And Councilmember, I completely understand your concerns. When I was invited to join this group, CEQA and fair housing are really close to my heart and I'm, I don't know if you've heard, but I'm newly elected. And one of my big problems with our city was affordable housing. We kept dodging affordable housing and then what we wanted to do, we would get pushback from our developers. Recently, we actually denied a development and the city was sued. And I was actually mentioned in that suit personally. So the city plus me. So I have, I really feel strongly about affordable housing. I feel strongly about inclusionary affordable housing in new developments. So if that's your concern, I, I've been up and down that road with this, with this group before I signed up. But CEQA is protected and I have been, my mind was put at ease. Any judge that looks at it will read the preamble and understand the intent of CEQA. CEQA will hold. I've actually, before I was elected, used CEQA a lot when it came to defending any kind of anti rezone movement that I had because the environment is important to me. I come from an area that I feel did not have fair housing. So I am really strong on the fair housing side. So I understand your, your concerns with that and I think that that would be a longer conversation outside of this call. But I understand your concerns. I, I feel confident that we're, we are protecting CEQA. We're protecting fair and fair housing and I don't know what else to say besides that without getting on a call with an attorney and walking you through that. I think this is important. At the end of the day, who do you want making the decision regarding your housing? Should it be Sacramento doing a one size fits all or should it be your city or my city?
That, I, I don't need the talking points on that.
No, no, it's not a talking point. It, it's just, it's, it's a fact. Like when we ask you to sign up for this resolution, it's because our residents really need our council people to be representatives of the, of them because they're the ones that elected us. And I feel like this resolution does that. And so, I mean, I just, I would hope that you would support it. I, I can understand if you have questions. I did too. But I think that we're the best at deciding how we should manage affordable housing, which I am in complete support of. And which, mind you, SB nine, SB ten, none of these bills from coming from Sacramento speak to affordable housing at all. Which to me is, is a bit insulting that they use that in all of their PR releases and don't speak to it at all when it comes to the actual initiatives. If you read SB nine, there is nothing in SB nine that will guarantee any affordable housing for your city or my city. So if, I think if bills coming down from Sacramento did that, you wouldn't see me on this call. I would be okay. Wouldn't be on this call at all. So I hope we can get your support.
Any other questions? That's my character.
So, um, so I did have the question around affordability because it talked a lot in the talking point about how this will help to make things more affordable and will allow cities to, I think one of the words was simply take action to make, make things more affordable. And thank you, Councilmember and jury, because I don't, I don't see affordable anywhere in the the preamble or any of the other pieces. And so I was struggling with that a little bit as well. The other piece, and so my, part of my thing is that tonight, I'm not sure that there's enough information to be able to make a decision to actually, for, for me, but I'm, you know, listen, I want to hear the public comment. I think that it's early in the, how do we really know what the fiscal implications are for us? How do we know when the eighty plus housing bills, I mean, the things that are, I also don't, I see the intent, well, actually, I don't even really see the intent about undoing the various previous housing bills. And so I want a little bit more about that and maybe I just missed it. I see it a lot of the promotional materials. But understanding what, what liability that actually brings up for our cities in terms of if we're not following state laws, and I know it says in here, the intent is to not have an impact on funding mechanisms, but still trying to understand all of the unintended consequences. Because that on propositions, there's a, an intent. But then in the actual application of it, I, I, I do want to understand that. And so I may have some more specific questions around that, but it was really the sort of the early in the process and really understanding. So I appreciate that you have put yourselves out there to get the, the proposition, you know, through the attorney generals. I did have one question. I saw that it said amended. What were the amendments that were taken in the public comment period to what finally came out with the title and the summary?
So the ones that I know of was adding CEQA and fair housing, all the words around that because a lot of people had that same question. And so that was absolutely added. One of the other big things is we had, we've forgotten to include, was it unincorporated county areas? We had cities and counties and then didn't have the unincorporated or something like that. Jovita, do you remember?
And I think charter cities as well, maybe.
Oh, and charter cities, right. Yes, we had to make sure that we got every single combination of city county combination, but, but mostly it was adding the wording around the CEQA and the fair housing.
Okay.
Specifically.
Thanks. I, I will likely have more questions after, but thank you.
Of course. Councilmember Quat.
Hello. Okay, I've got a couple of questions that want to just clarify the, the few questions in on the eighty housing bills that was mentioned before that this could be undone going back to 2017. Just wanted, can you explain the mechanism? How if this voters pass this in November, how do the eighty get overturned going back to 2017?
This actually does not actually change any existing law. It just says if there's a conflict with our laws, zoning and land use laws, if there's a conflict, then we win. The state law doesn't win. And we can choose to implement any of them we want, right? And not have any conflicts. Or if we do have a conflict, we, we are the, the final say. So it doesn't actually undo them.
Got it. So it doesn't undo it. Every city around, all 482 cities, everybody decides which ones they accept and which ones they, they can reject the one or, you know, overrule the state ones.
And so we adopted, we adopted our density bonus, right? We adopted our own density bonus. That stays, right?
Got it. And the 2017 date going, everything since 2017, but I didn't find anything that related to 2017. Is there actually a date saying if something happened before that, we cannot do that?
No, it's, that's not how it is. It's more of a, here, let me see if I can share my screen. That was when the housing crisis was starting to get used in terms of which bills. And I can send this around. It was an analysis by a friend of mine. And they started in 2017 by Jerry Brown. And if you look at these, they get classified by color and deep red is reduced city planning and land use authority giving more powers to the state. The second one is eliminate or weaken public review or environmental protections in CEQA. Orange is weaken city power overhearing, deadline zoning fees, dub streamlining. Tangerine is weaken or muddy density bonus law, a longstanding affordable housing tool. Or yellow is require cities to gather and report numerous type of data to the state. So if you go there, these were the bills signed in 2017, the governor Bill Brown signed, ranked by these different colors. And then in 2018, Governor Brown signed number nineteen. Governor Newsom signed. And then last year, I know, 2020, those signed. And 2021, we haven't, all I, we've got in here yet, we haven't done the analysis yet. And so you can, you can see the, they tried to pass the big, big laws and then they failed and then they broke them apart into these little piecemeal pieces. And the one that gets, gets you going is they Senator Jim Beal tried to reverse California spiral via, via SB five and SB seven ninety-five. He sought to fund a $2 billion a year in affordable housing. And Governor Newsom vetoed it in 2019. He tried to bring it back in 2020. And it actually died much sooner. And this was an affordable housing funding mechanism that had died in our legislature. The good news is that there's word right now, there's some rumors right now, not actually more than just rumors. It says Senator Hertzberg is thinking about a $50 billion affordable housing bond at the state level. And that would mean that you get the $50 billion affordable housing bond coupled with cities being able to, to get their own local control. Now we can really start building some affordable housing because like I say, the state laws right now are limiting us to the amount affordable we can build. The developers can just say no. That's, so you, you say yes and yes. And now we're starting to work together, you know, and really have a pathway for some real solutions. That's, that's how I'm looking.
So, so just, thank you for showing the chart of 2017 forward. But just the language, I mean, because the cover sheet said this is going to overturn, you know, eighty from 2017 onwards. But just so that I could be clear and the public can be clear, it actually could overturn things before 2017. And all the way going back, right? All laws in California are up for grabs here, right?
State, no, the state only has zoning and land use authority based on the emergency powers by the housing crisis. And so, and Molly, you can correct me, but this is how I've, 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 I've heard this. It was only when the emergency powers by the housing crisis, that's what allows them to override our zoning and land use. Otherwise they can't. The California constitution says that belongs to us. And it was only because of that emergency act.
Got it. I, and so I'm not that clear about that, but I did want to ask questions about the three exceptions. Because these are the coastal areas, power plants that are larger than 50 megawatts, which doesn't seem like a housing thing. But I have, I'm wondering how that, so these, and then the third one is infrastructure, water, transportation and communications infrastructure. So.
The state should have authority to do those and those can override local authority, right? But if it's in the state's interest to build a freeway, then they should be able to build a freeway.
Right. So those three areas are like the state reserve, you know, has the rights for thirty, you know, for those three exceptions only, but everything else, cities have the power under this constitutional amendment. Do I understand it correctly?
Correct.
Okay. And so just going along those lines there. So I'm, I'm an energy person. So I sort of think in energy terms, but does this mean that cities can ban drilling for oil on their land? Because so that it's, cities could define that it's no longer permitted use to drill for oil. I, I see.
Jovita, I'm going to say cities can do that today. Antioch just passed a resolution to do that and we're looking at our own resolution to do that. So you can do that today if you like. You don't need, the state cannot come into play when it comes to that.
Okay, it's my understanding that the state issues the permits for drilling for oil.
Your county has to issue the permit first. And then the state also has to issue their own permits. And I do know that because we have oil drilling on Deer Valley that's happening. They issued permits on Deer Valley for three oil and gas drills. They didn't issue, they're missing three. So we're looking into that in Contra Costa. And they want to put three oil and gas drills 1,000 feet from homes on county land from Brentwood. So as a city, yes, we can ban that already. So that, that doesn't even come into play.
All right. Thank you. And then the second question is, can a city with a refinery, like we have in Rodeo or Richmond or Martinez, can cities with a refinery say, we don't want refineries on our land? That's not a permitted use. Because that's a state permitted now, right? But Martinez doesn't today have the ability to say, we don't want the refinery. But under, if this was passed, then the cities could say, no more refinery. Is that my understanding?
They can do that today too. I mean, no one could come to, I mean, we have the waterways in the delta and people have come out to the delta area and asked for things and we say no. So you can do that today. You, the state will not override you when it comes to oil and gas drilling. You have the final say regarding.
I, I'm not, I'm talking about refineries. My understanding of refineries is that's controlled by the state. That, that, that cities don't have any jurisdiction over refineries.
That is not my understanding. But I can get, I can get more details. I think it's kind of a battle.
That'd be great. I appreciate if you could get details and clarification. You know, whether cities can, under this new constitutional amendment, say, we don't want refineries. That'd be very interesting. The third question is that, you know, there's a mention of 50 megawatt power plants, anything bigger than 50 megawatts. The state can have control, but if it's smaller, then cities have control, right? So I just checked and there are eighty natural gas peaker power plants in the state of California, of which 25 of them are less than 50 megawatts. And so does this, if this constitutional amendment passes, does that mean like in Antioch, there's a 45 megawatt natural gas peaker plant and these generate electricity during peak load in the summertime. So could cities say, we don't, we don't no longer permit a natural gas peaker plant here? And cities have the power to that.
Antioch actually just voted down an oil gas pipeline. So I know that there, it, cities have a lot more leeway when it comes to oil and gas. Especially since the governor just came out with his latest desire for there to be no oil and gas within 3,200 feet of a residence. And most of us are within 3,200 feet of a residence anywhere in our jurisdictions when it comes to cities. I can find out more of that too, if you like, but.
It's just like a, I mean, it's sort of a question of why the cutoff was 50 megawatts. It sort of means a threshold higher. Cities don't have control, but under.
I would tend to say there's probably not a large population, anything over 50 megawatts. Just because of the latest with Newsom saying, you know, 32, we were actually asking for a 2,100 foot, you know, distance from any kind of oil and gas drilling or any kind of anything when it came to that from residents. He came out with 3,200. So I think the appetite.
Drilling, this is for a power plant. So that's something different.
Well, it's, I know it sounds different, but they're not going to allow that because of the pollution. The pollution actually I think would be worse from a power plant and an oil, you know, and from a refinery than from an actual oil and gas drilling station. So I can find out about that, but I mean,
Okay.
That's kind of a big topic right now. I can't see them putting that anywhere near a home whatsoever in today's current environment, especially with what Newsom came out with this week, I mean, this month.
Okay, that would be great. I mean, understanding how the megawatts, that was just a natural gas example, but do cities have the ability then to quash things that are less than 50 megawatts? It looks like that was one of the exceptions. Under the infrastructure question, it said it included water, transportation and communications infrastructures would be sort of state jurisdiction, but it doesn't mention energy infrastructure. So would energy infrastructure be under the jurisdiction of locals? So all those power lines that cross cities and counties could, people say, we don't want those power lines covering our cities, take them away?
That's a really good question. I'll try to find out.
Okay, thank you. And then my last one was that in the solar energy industry, the, the current laws in California allow every homeowner to have, to put solar panels on their roof. Because a decade ago, it used to be that if you had a homeowners association saying, those are ugly. We don't allow them in our homeowners association. It, it, you know, local jurisdictions rules about aesthetics sort of trumped a homeowner's right to put solar on their roof. And so the state overturned that and allowed homeowner, every homeowner in California today has the right to put solar on the roof. That's not a right enjoyed in every state around the country and it wasn't enjoyed by us implicitly. So if this constitutional amendment passes, does it mean then that cities will again have the ability to have, you know, aesthetic rules that may block people from putting solar panels on their roof?
I don't know.
I don't know, but I wouldn't think that would be a land use issue. That's more, I mean, I would think that would be, that was, came from more a design perspective. And I will say my husband has sold 50% of. And um I will say my husband has sold fifty percent of the solar rooftops in Brentwood, so I wouldn't be signing up for this if it was going to impact our solar rooftops. Um, just F Y I in the area, but um, so no, I don't, I I don't see that as being a land use issue at all, that would be more of an aesthetic. Thing more than anything from from my perspective, just off the cuff. That doesn't even come into play, I would think, because yeah, again, I mean, yeah, no.
Okay, uh well, that's uh that's the only questions I have for now, thank you.
All right, Councilor Dawson.
Hi, thank you, I thanks Susan, um Mayor Candell and and Councilwoman Mendoza for being here. I uh and thanks to my fellow council members for your line of questioning, I'm pretty much along the same way in terms of asking about affordability piece. I'll save more comment for later, but right now I think what I would appreciate is more information, uh Mayor Candell, that. That spreadsheet you sent or showed us would be very helpful. Um, because in in my interpretation of all these laws, the intent of those laws were to provide more housing in general. Not just affordable, but also housing in generals and um. This initiative basically in saying, oh, what uh being able, what you just explained, Mayor Candell, that it doesn't. Roll back those laws, it just basically allows, and I'm wondering if that's specific, um. I I wouldn't have read that that way in this initiative, that it just our pick and choose, we get to cherry pick what works best for us in terms of local control. Um, which makes sense, but at the same time, very much so, developers are are partners necessarily. And um. I'm just wondering, it just seems, it seems like we're assuming that all developers out there are are out to, you know. Um, take advantage of these laws in in the negative way, when very much um it is up to. Us to figure out how to work with these stakeholders. Whether or not this initiative goes forward, so so just my line of thinking here, so how we're being collaborative and also. The first piece you brought up about um funding, about the redevelopment agencies going away. This doesn't mention anything like that, I know in the future, we're hoping, as you mentioned, a senator is working on a bill, but. That's something I would hope would be included in some of kind of initiative like this, that. Not only are we thinking of more local control, but ways to. Basically get to providing the housing that the intent of all those other laws were purported to.
Another thing, another thing we learned is that you can't have an initiative with mo- more than one topic.
Hmm.
You can only have single topic initiative, so. Yes, we all wanted to add an affordable component, but we can't. It has to be a separate initiative, unfortunately. That's the way that these, the the rules around initiatives are, has to be single topic. So if we said local land use and planning, we can't af- include affordable housing.
The other line of thought, um I'm thinking in terms of financial toll, the potential, um. We do have Rena numbers to hit and this pit specific cycle coming up, we have particular numbers to hit within income ranges. And if we do not hit those, we stand the chance to lose more of our local control. Um, so that is why I think it is important that um. I'm not sure if if uh. Uh, well, let me just say that that's just a comment I'll make for now and and I'll I'll wait till after um public comment to.
So my understanding of how this interacts with Rena is Rena goes back to being a planning tool. And then all those coercive, the word was coercive laws around penalties around it. I believe are intend, we believe they'll be undone.
Are those laws particularly?
Yeah, there are laws that were passed to put the teeth into Rena.
Which included the new uh division, then, that is the new department that is overlooking.
Um, no, that'll still happen, the Housing Accountability Unit, they can still have that, that's up to them, you know, that's not.
Okay.
No, they're not the ones that have, no, it's the other um laws that actually put the penalties in, right? And and that is thought by the attorneys that have looked at it, that those pieces will go away. So it it's the thought, okay, so that would. Do you have any other insight into that? Not right, and maybe he'll beat it us, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I I mean, I just think when, if we're talking affordable housing. I genuinely want affordable housing in my neighborhood, it's it's, I mean, I. My story is I, you know, I I we grew up pretty poor in Oakland, affordable housing is something that's uh near and dear to my heart. When S B nine happened, I actually became very upset because I don't think this helps people who need affordable housing because. There's no requirement that anything out of S B nine or any of these other, you know, a lot of these other um and this bills. Actually provide affordable housing, so I wish we could have put affordable housing in the bill, we just couldn't double up, but um. I'm hoping that cities, when we, when you get back local control, when I'm hoping this um initiative passes on the ballot. That will all take to heart what's important and make sure that we're housing all Californians and um. And we all know what's best for our city and we know what infrastructure we have and what we can support. My biggest concern in my town is schools, our schools are overcrowded, we keep adding portables after portables. And if you keep doing that, the only kids you're hurting are the ones that are lower income, because they can't afford the tutors for those A P classes, they can't afford. To take extra training to get on the sports club, you know, the sports teams, so. I know that this is a really big undertaking, I'm not naive to that, but I think that cities. People who are in government now understand more than before the need for affordable housing, and I think that. We need to be trusted and I think I need the air cover from Sacramento, I need them to put these bills into place that say. All new development has to have X amount of affordable housing, because then I don't have to sit there and worry when I'm voting for something. That if I pick and choose that bill, I'm okay, I got the air cover, I won't get sued personally. And that's what I'm looking for now, is some air cover, so that if I want to help with affordable housing and I want to do. Different things with housing and that I'll have some protection, so uh. I mean, I wish there was an easy way to say this in five minutes, but it's such a big undertaking, you know, in California, we have point four percent of our population is unhoused. Point four percent, that's um, I think the last census was a hundred and sixty one thousand, I'm sure it's more now. We have eight percent of our homes are vacant, so there's something going on with that math. When the census is telling me that eight percent are vacant and oh, point four percent are um are unhoused. So how do we fix that problem instead of just adding um more housing that actually isn't housing our residents? And that's my main goal, how do I help house my residents, not help investors, um not have another Zillow happen, which is what we saw last week. So. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Andre.
Yeah, I have uh two questions, first. Is it your anticipation with respect to the Rena regime? That it will remain in place as a tool to guide cities and provide a number that. Uh if people hit, uh then there'll be sufficient housing uh to meet the needs. But uh there will be no enforcement mechanism.
Right.
For uh uh, I mean, so cities can comply or they can totally ignore it if they want to.
Uh, right, but that happens today, I mean, we're. Right.
I understand, but I just wanted to see if that was your expectation.
Yeah.
I can in turn, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into developing this initiative and getting it to where it is now. Uh, an easy task, but let me ask this, was there any discussion at any point? And I understand completely, uh you can't have two topics in in one initiative. Was there ever a discussion that our most important need was affordable housing? And so let's have an initiative that would raise a hundred billion fund for affordable housing that would be allocated to the cities? Was that ever discussed?
Uh, affordable housing is our goal, and the problem is that the state laws, why this one's important is because the state laws. Are not letting us do it.
No.
They, but yes, of course, we all want, but but we want.
Mayor, Mayor Candell, if 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 we had, if we had money to do it.
We would totally do it.
We we could build all the affordable housing that, but the state isn't stopping us from doing that. It's it's money, I mean, so if if there were a state fund, if 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 uh a statewide bond. Called for a hundred billion dollars to spend on affordable housing, I mean, wouldn't that do more to create affordable housing?
At a fifteen percent, at a fifteen percent for the market. So no, that is what we have right now.
We're not, we're not limited by fifteen percent.
No, the developers don't have to do more than that. They are not, they.
We can wait till the discussion period.
Right, yeah. They, because they don't, they don't have to.
I I understand his frustration though, right? The chicken or the egg, the chicken or the egg.
Right.
Um, so I I completely understand his frustration, because what goes first, I think um. At least in my city, dev- I mean, it sounds like in your state it's not the same, in my city. Developers are really going at it with us and not wanting to do the affordable housing, so.
Do you have an inclusionary ordinance?
Inclusionary, they don't want to do it and they're fighting.
Do you have an inclusionary ordinance?
Yes, we have ten percent, which tomorrow night I want to raise to twenty percent. So I do have an inclusionary one and they're fighting me at the ten, so can you imagine what's gonna happen with the twenty? Uh it it's gonna get crazy, but I feel like it's the right thing to do, so I will put myself out there for that. But I it's, if I don't have control of what's going on in my city, then it's, you know, and I don't get. Air cover from Sacramento, then all of this is, it's it's not gonna work and. We haven't been seeing affordable housing, if I had seen these bills and as a girl from East Oakland, if I had seen these bills working. I wouldn't say a word, I really wouldn't say a word, but I'm not seeing any of these bills work at all. And I don't, and I I don't see the analytics behind it, I see them putting out bills and giving us, you know. For example, S B nine with the Turner Institute, they did this, you know, Berkeley, they did an analysis, but they they missed the biggest lever. The biggest lever is that the homeownership only has to be for three years of of you need to own that. And then you can turn around and sell it, well, I hold on to my stock more than three years, I don't know how how long you do, but our homes have become these like. Pawns to make money when it should, which I get, you want to make money, but they should be homes first. And no one is helping us when when it comes to that in regards to Sacramento, if I was getting that help, I'd be fine. You know, I talked to my friends in Oakland about it, about these bills and they're mortified, I mean, the gentrification that's going on. In areas like Oakland, San Francisco, San Jose, it's killing these towns and people are having to move from Oakland. Out to, you know, Far East County and it's just, it's not, it's not the right thing to do, because they can't afford to split a lot and build homes and then subdivide the home. It's not something they can afford to do, but an investor can surely come in and do it and flip it in three years. I already heard of an investor who's who's bought homes in Discovery Bay, has hired an interior designer friend of mine. Who will be flipping two homes in January with S B nine. So if these bills were helping the everyday person, you wouldn't have me on this call, you really wouldn't, but I think we need a reset. We need a reset and we need cities to come together and work together and really find a solution for affordable housing, because if it was working. We would have already seen the fruits of their labor since tw- since these bills started in twenty seventeen and I'm just. As a regular resident, that's why I ran, that's why I'm newly elected, I'm not seeing it and it's it's, it hurts people who really need the affordable housing.
All right, any other questions? Thank you guys, all right, we'll take a comments, a public comment.
There there are some hands raised, I'll um start with Zach Bowling, followed by Rafa Sunnyfield. If anyone else would like to um speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. And uh we do utilize a uh timer to help speakers uh see the three minute time limit we have during public comment.
Hey there, can you hear me?
I can, thanks.
Yeah, um I just want to say, I'm disappointed this was brought forward, I would urge council not to move forward with this resolution. Um, nothing in this initiative helps build affordable housing, nothing in this guarantees affordable housing. And I'm not sure why more effort wasn't just spent on building an initiative to fund affordable housing instead. Um paraphrasing proponents on words that unrolls everything attempting to solve the housing crisis by pretending it doesn't exist. And on its surface, it's just terrible anti-housing ballot initiative, but more than that would break California if it were to pass, it's just reckless. Um, it's full of bugs that can't be fixed without another voter initiative, the next general election costing millions. That's why the legislature didn't advance it when it was submitted as A C A seven. Um, for example, Caltrans, Bart, state power agencies, other bodies wouldn't have a carve out in this terrible initiative, so that they would have to seek out local city approval. Just about do anything that they're statutorily obligated to do. Um, now, this initiative tries to flip the system of governments in this country, was founded on its head, uh our government was built on a system of supremacy for a good reason. Federal laws override state laws, state laws override local laws, but by doing this, cities will no longer be accountable to the state, including for fair housing law. Given how it's written, regardless of the preamble, um you should get better counsel before backing this. Um, it's no different than the state's right conservative movement racists used to um to counter the federal government during the civil rights era, reform era of the fifties and sixties. Um, in fact, cities would have the ability to enact segregationist and exclusionary housing policies again when it comes to how cities own state law barring. Um, that it wouldn't matter, A F F H land use policy wouldn't matter. When Trump rescinded fair use house policies in California, acted quickly to restore them in California, this initiative would roll them right back to the Trump era. Why would you vote on something that would halt and so much needed affordable housing from being built across the state and create homelessness and affordability? Um, proponents named this Stop Sacramento Initiative, then the Community Choice Initiative, and now it's the Iron Neighborhoods Voice Initiative, but I have to ask. Whose voice? Not my voice and not my homeless neighbor's voice. A better name would be Let's Segregate and Let Us Exclude Folks Again Initiative, or Let's Make Homelessness Worse Initiative. I'm so disappointed that Mayor Candell already donated five hundred dollars towards this NIMBY initiative, we need to do better and we need to roll back prog-. Not roll back progress by unilaterally tying the state's hands to help solve this housing crisis. If this ballot initiative were to pass and damage the state for generations, my ki- kids would never be able to own a home in California. No city would be obligated to build anything affordable, so I ask you not to um push this resolution forward, thank you.
Any questions for the speaker? Well, thank you.
The next speaker is Rafa Sunnyfield. Followed by William Butcher, Elliot Hudson, Libby Henry, Bob Mack, Beth S. Jeremy Levine, Nico Nagel, so there are currently seven hands raised and fifty two participants um in the Zoom call right now.
Yes, uh uh, thank you very much, this is Rafa Sonnenfeld, um. I just wanted to say, you know, the the proponents of this init- initiative should be ashamed of themselves, um. This is possibly the most segregationist racist ballot initiative that California has put. Uh on on a ballot in decades. It's completely disingenuous to say that cities are handcuffed to produce affordable housing. Cities can produce more affordable housing now, they're, but they don't want to and they're trying to undermine this, their obligations to the state. By using this uh this facade of an initiative to uh to get around their obligations. Um, another thing this initiative does is it uh. Says that, or it allows the the cities and and the counties to override state laws when it comes to. Regulating development in fire danger zones, in wetlands, in critical habitats for endangered species, so, you know. There are so many unintended consequences for a bill like this, it is just downright shameful that you would even consider. Uh, supporting such a thing, uh, you know, affirmatively furthering fair housing, uh. That is a law that uh in order to be implemented, needs to have land use components to it. Uh, there is no way we will ever uh fix the injustices of redlining of uh. Of single, of exclusionary zoning uh that have been per- perpetrated on communities of color, disadvantaged communities. That have been locked out of homeownership, that have lo- been locked out of uh opportunity. because of racist segregationists who want to have local control. You know, if the city of Lafayette goes down this path, you'll be following in a long line of, you know, states' rights, local control, you know, governments like the government of Mississippi in the 1950s and 1960s. This is absolutely no different. So, shame on you for even suggesting that you pass such a ridiculously absurd, disgusting. I'm just offended and livid that you would even consider.
Let's keep it nice and cordial.
There is nothing nice and cordial about this wretched bill. Shame on you, all of you, for considering it. Thank you.
Any questions? We will address these issues at the end of public comment. But Councilmember Andery.
Rafa, we appreciate everyone's comments, particularly on an issue that has statewide importance. But can I ask you, are you a resident of Lafayette?
I don't know. Thank you very much, Rafa.
The next public speaker is William Butcher, and there are seven other hands raised.
Hello, I'm Bill Booker, resident of Lafayette, President of Lafayette Homeowners Council. Thank you for your time. I would like to encourage the city council to consider supporting this amendment, or this constitutional amendment. After discussion and thinking about this, the mandates from the state overriding local control has a big effect on how our city will be developed. And I always think locally and in the hands of people who are accountable to local residents are a better way to do it. So, we would encourage you to support this. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker? Vice Mayor Garanger.
So, Bill, thank you. And is this on behalf of the homeowners association or council, or you personally?
Both.
The next speaker is Elliot Hudson, followed by Libby Henry.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the questions that the members of the council have been asking, but sometimes if you talk about the trees too long, you lose sight of the fact you're standing in a forest. My involvement in Lafayette government affairs has always been driven by an underlying principle that the government of Lafayette should be responsible to the priorities of the majority of its residents. There is no place that is more important than in local planning control because it determines the fundamental nature of our community. The state's ongoing deprivation of that local planning control is intolerable. The housing issue has been exacerbated by cities that gave tax breaks to create tens of thousands of lavishly paid jobs, foreign owners who hide money by buying houses that sit vacant for years, including one in my neighborhood that's been vacant for over 10 years, Airbnb owners, and now Wall Street investors and private equity speculators. The housing issue was not created by Lafayette residents. Let's be honest, the latest raft of legislation has no requirement whatsoever that anything developers build be affordable or actually address the greatest needs. Developers who have tried to force unwanted projects on local communities for decades are now laughing up their sleeves. On this issue, Lafayette should not be dictated to by politicians who do not live here, who we cannot talk to, who have ignored our representatives, for whom we cannot vote, and who have no accountability to us. The problem is not just SB9, or 10, or ADUs. It's measures that have come before and additional measures even since the passage of those most recent bills, such as making ADUs separately saleable. The fight to restore local control cannot be won by reversing any single statute. The sponsors of Sacramento's outrageous deprivation of local control have revised and amended and revised their legislation, and they will continue to do so until they are finally stopped. I support with every fiber of my being the constitutional amendment to restore local land use control to local communities. I have backed it with my own donation, and I fully expect to make more before this fight is over. I firmly support the council adopting the resolution to support the initiative to restore local control. Do not hide or hesitate behind whether this is the right initiative or be dissuaded by overblown and unfounded hysterical charges of racism. If a better bill comes along, support it. But in the meantime, this is the best hope we have to restore our control of our town. In my view, if you do not support Lafayette on this crucial issue, on Sacramento's massive arrogant catastrophic dismissive insult, you betray us. Frankly, if any member of this council cannot stand with Lafayette residents on this controlling issue, I have to ask what you are doing on the council.
All right. Any questions for the speaker? No, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Libby Henry, followed by Bob Mack and three other speakers.
Hi, members of the council, and I'm glad to see that Hovita is back on the call. I probably should have printed out my letter that I hope you all received today. It was in a lot more detail than I'm going to go into tonight. I wanted to basically second what Elliot Hudson just said. I think he said it very eloquently and perfectly, and perfect timing as well. I am very disturbed and disappointed by the first two people that spoke and their accusations of racism and all of these irrelevant things to this initiative, not showing a complete ignorance and misunderstanding that this is a constitutional amendment to give power and authority back to city councils that has been taken away by many housing bills that have, as Hovita mentioned earlier, have not proven to be solving the affordable housing issue. And if they were listening before, they would know that that initiative cannot cover both issues. So, take the, you know, take local control first, and then with the local control, then you can deal with providing affordable housing. Don't behave like, you know, don't let people convince you that this is something other than what it truly is. It's a city's constitutional right to make their land use and zoning decisions themselves. And all of these housing bills are taking that away from you. You know, and I appreciate Mr. Quox and Mr. Andery's questions. They are very relevant and valuable. And I just want to say, I hope that you all support this initiative. The cities in the state of California do not deserve the kind of punishment and attacks that they are getting from the state itself and from people that apparently are just ignorant of the facts. Anyway, I just wanted to say, please, please support this initiative. It's to get the initiative on the ballot so that we can vote on it, so that the people of California have a say in what's going on, and the cities do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No, thank you, Libby.
The next speaker is Bob Mack, followed by Beth S., Jeremy Levine, and Nico Nagel.
Hello, Bob. We can see you and hear you. Oh, no, we can't hear you. We still can't hear you, Bob. I know you're unmuted, but it's it's not coming through. Is your volume down?
Now?
Yes.
All right. Bob McLean, Lafayette resident. Thanks for your patience there. Okay, I oppose this resolution. I hope the council will too. I mean, the ultimate local control is at the homeowner level. Homeowners should be able to use their land consistent with the general plan zoning and objective design criteria. What this initiative will do will take that local control away from homeowners. The city actually does have local control. It's got a zoning ordinance, and it can develop objective design criteria. So, it's not like the city can't do anything. If you're concerned about affordable housing, the historical status quo clearly hasn't worked, which is why the state stepped in. And what this initiative wants to do is go back to the historical status quo, which we already know didn't work for affordable housing. I got to say, Mayor Candell's presentation had a fair amount of fear mongering and misinformation. It was like, what are we going to do about water? How can the city afford that? Well, that's East Bay mud. That's user fees. What are we going to do about sewers? What are we going to do about that? Well, that's central sand. That's user fees. It's not a city issue. Recalling SB 35 is for massive developments. No, it's not. It applies to cities that are not meeting its arena. It's not about massive developments. Tying the housing crisis to redevelopment agencies is silly. You can find graphs that show that the wage growth and housing costs have been diverging since the 1970s. This thing's been 40, 50 years in the making, not 10 years. I guess my final thing, oh, solar panels. To put solar panels in Lafayette, you got to get a permit from the city. So, I would say yes that if this thing passes, that the city could limit solar panels on roofs. I mean, that's what it is right now. My last thing, since I'm talking way faster than I thought I would, I'm concerned about the ethics here. That typically when politicians support something, there's a little asterisk by the name that says, you know, Mayor Candell, asterisk, you know, title for information purposes only. However, Mayor Candell is actively campaigning for this initiative as the mayor, using city resources, which is not legal as far as I can tell. Advocating for fundraising in her presentation, if we get this on the ballot, who's we? It's not the city. She's talking about herself as an advocate for this political initiative. So, it seems highly unethical that the mayor is using city resources and advocating for people to donate to this initiative as the mayor of Lafayette, not as an individual person. And so, I'm out of time. Thank you.
I will answer that. The FPPC allows me to do this. The city cannot advocate, even if we do pass a resolution, the city can't campaign. And I can't do it on city time, but I'm a volunteer. And so, I am allowed to do this. That is absolutely within my purview as an individual member. I just happen to be mayor right now. And so, that doesn't, when I'm not mayor in a month, I can be a council member and do this, and any one of us can. The city can't. Even if we sign the resolution, the city can't. So, that's how the rules are, just to let you know. I did check.
I disagree with that, and thank you for the information.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Beth S., followed by Jeremy Levine, Nico Nagel, Cheryl M., and Lynn Hayden.
Hi. Hi, Beth Soto, local Lafayette resident and designer. I consult a lot of Lafayette, other Lafayette homeowners about, you know, going through the building process. And I can say firsthand, and with a lot of other people's back, you know, experience, that these housing laws are really meant to help regular homeowners get through the process of getting a building permit. And if those rights were taken away, I mean, these laws have been strengthened. Nobody's even started talking about SB8, the latest one that, you know, to just say we're going to try to undo them is to go back to the same process that has, you know, made it more difficult for homeowners to just get permits throughout history here in Lafayette, going through the design review process, the subjective design review process. And I think that the laws have changed for our homeowners in that arena more than anything, and nobody, especially Mayor Candell, has said a word about it. And what I think we should be doing is educating homeowners about how the laws are going to help them get just a regular building permit. And because we've got such an aging housing stock here in Lafayette, there's so many homeowners, you know, it's the majority of people here in Lafayette who want to be able to do home projects and be able to rely on the local zoning laws. And so, you know, God is my witness, that's why those laws were created because local jurisdictions have been thwarting it, and only developers know how to get through the process. Regular homeowners are kept in the dark with the wool pulled over their eyes. And the only people who can do it is people who can go, you know, behind a closed door with the city planning director and say, what do I need to do? And I hear that, you know, you have to sue. You have to sue the city to get what you want. We know that that's what's been happening. The only people who can do it is people who know how to sue the city. And that's what the laws have tried to help people to do so that they can just get through the process without just jacking up the cost of the project by having to sue. And that's, you know, just please be transparent about what these laws are for our typical homeowners going through design review. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And thank you.
Don't support this measure. It's really, really, really bad. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thanks.
The next speaker is Jeremy Levine.
I believe it's Jeremy Levine.
Thank you, Jeremy Levine. There are two more hands raised. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Hi, I'm David Levine. I'm a homeowner in Lafayette. Thanks for getting the name right. And I'd like to cede my time to Jeremy. Thanks very much.
It's exciting when the mayor knows your name, not just, you know, how it's pronounced. So, I was going to give a big fiery speech, but I wrote in a letter already. It says pretty much everything I was going to say in my speech. So, I just wanted to make sure I have plenty of time to say some of the other things that I wanted to talk about. I do just want to say that I appreciate the time that Mayor Candell and Hovita have spent on this initiative. It's clearly a lot of work. Do I agree with a single thing they've said? No, but I appreciate the effort that has gone into this. I do want to address some of the claims that have been made tonight. I want to start with the discussion of a bond. What if we just had a big affordable housing bond? And first, I want to clarify something that Carl was saying, I think, which was if the city passed $100 billion bond, if the state passed. if the city passed $100 billion bond, if the state passed $100 billion bond, gave that money to cities, right now, cities could build with that money 100% affordable developments. There's no restriction on what cities can build if they have the financing. There is a restriction on how much we can mandate 100, you know, for-profit developments to be inclusionary, but that's different than what Carl was talking. I might be misunderstanding, but I think that was something that didn't seem to come through between Mayor Candell and HOVITA and Carl, that like, if the state gave us the money, we could build enough affordable housing. It's interesting to think about that Mayor Candell mentioned, you know, we should do a $50 billion bond. How much affordable housing would we get from a $50 billion bond? In San Francisco, the Turner Center for Housing Innovation at UC Berkeley has estimated that costs $700,000 for one, one affordable unit. Now, housing isn't so expensive to build everywhere as it is in San Francisco, but it's expensive. And from a $50 billion bond, I'm making a very generous estimate that we might get 200,000 units of affordable housing. I'm just assuming that we're gonna get a third, that it costs a third of the price of what it does in San Francisco to build an affordable unit. And from a report that Mayor Candell has cited before about the housing crisis from Freddie Mac, which estimates that we have an 820,000 unit shortage. This is a report Mayor Candell has cited multiple times before. 200,000 is way less than $820,000. So $50 billion isn't coming close to meeting our housing shortage. $100 billion, nowhere near. It's nowhere near at all. And the Freddie Mac report itself that Mayor Candell has cited supports laws that reduce zoning regulations. It's quite clear in the report, they explicitly say states like California have been restricting zoning laws and, and making moves to reduce single-family zoning. Good. The Freddie Mac report Mayor Candell has cited supports ending single-family zoning. And just to talk about affordable housing bonds in the first place, how is it equitable for the state to give us community like Lafayette, which is much wealthier than the average city in California, money to build affordable housing? Why should Riverside's taxpayer dollars pay for us to build affordable housing? It's, it's kind of strange. I think there's something that Mayor Candell talked about, which was like Jerry Brown and the end of redevelopment, that being the start of the housing crisis. Somebody else already referenced this. I think it was Bob Mack, but like housing prices in California have been appreciating for over 50 years at this point. So how does the end of redevelopment in 2011 or 12 or something lead to 50 years of housing crisis? I, I just don't see the correlation there. Mayor Candell claimed that supply and demand does not apply to the housing market. I've heard similar things said by other organizations like Livable California, the Embarket Arrow Institute. Haven't seen an economist support that hypothesis yet, that supply and demand doesn't apply to the housing market. In fact, I've seen a lot of economic studies that say the exact opposite, that if you increase supply, that is the most effective way to reduce market rate housing. There's a really interesting claim, you know, Mayor Candell was making the legitimate statement that we are not allowed to have an inclusionary housing ordinance that is above a certain percent before we have to do an impact study. I think it's 15%. Any more than that, you have to do an impact study, which is prohibitive to doing a higher inclusionary housing ordinance. The question is, do you get more affordable housing in net if you just raise the inclusionary housing ordinance? You might just de-incentivize development. That's the reason that the state has given for restricting how much affordable housing cities can require from for-profit developers. So, I mean, it's better to get 15% of 100 or 1,000 units than it is to get zero units, period. In, in my opinion, I don't know what the, the numbers are and how that impacts it, but it's like, it's, it's worth considering. And, and then there's this question that like, you know, in the first place, actually, I'll just stop there. These are some of the reasons that have been given to justify the local control initiative. I just don't think there's, it doesn't seem like there's very strong supporting evidence. Neither HOVITA nor Mayor Candell seem to be citing a lot of academic studies or nonpartisan research about these issues. They were making a lot of claims. I think that their intentions are good and that they are doing what they think will protect homeowners, as Beth Soto referenced. It just might not be to the benefit of homeowners in quite the way that, that we as a community want. Thank you for your time, for your hard work.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you, Jeremy.
The next speaker is Cheryl M., and there are three other hands raised after Cheryl.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I will be very short. I have two comments. One is that I've been coming to city meetings for probably close to a decade. At the transfer, design level, planning, city council, and many various other meetings. And they, I must say that the planning commission, the design review, and the city council have a big job to do with creating projects that work really well in our city. And often I disagree, or I may agree with them on how they rule, and that's how government works, and that's how it works. What is getting to be really, really frustrating, whether I'm involved in the project or not, is to hear a commission or a city council member say that they can't rule on something because of laws. There's a whole different level of passion and anger and frustration that is growing because of that scenario. It's not just a frustration because of how a commission or a council rules on a, on a project. It's now, they can't say, they can't rule on a, a part of a project because of some law, and their hands are tied. I'm paraphrasing. That's not what they say, but that's, they're paraphrasing that. It's very frustrating. If we were all sitting in front of you, you might hear gasps, frowns, upset faces. And then I want to say that about two days after SB nine and 10 were signed into law, in my mailbox paid by the real estate agent was a flyer that came in my box, nice glossy, really long, expensive flyer. And on it, it says, your home sold guaranteed, or I'll buy it myself. And next to it says, this person has overseed cash buyers ready to go. Well, it says Peter has overseas cash buyers and a phone number below it to call. This came in my mailbox like within a day or two afterwards. So the, the idea that was brought up earlier in the questions about these SB nine projects intend not, like after the three years is up, if they, there's no guarantee that they'll stay for three years. But, but it, it's not gonna be people that will be able to buy. It's gonna be people that are gonna own these projects that don't even live maybe in California or the United States that are gonna own these projects. So I think this initiative is worth considering. I'm still, you know, working really hard at it. But if we, if you don't have a consensus tonight and you need more time to think about it, please maybe bring it back. But there's some serious concerns with citizens that have gone through the process over the years about hearing you not being able to, either the council or the planning commission, not being able to rule on an aspect of a project because of some law. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you, Cheryl.
The next speaker is Lynn Haddane, followed by Carol Singer.
I, I see you there, but I can't hear or see you, Lynn. I still can't see or hear you, Lynn. All right, Lynn, maybe maybe we can come back to Lynn? If we can't get her to come through. Ooh, maybe I see her. There, I can see you now. Can't hear you. You're unmuted, but I still can't hear you. Can you turn your volume up? Or turn your sound on? Still can't hear you. Now you're muted. Nope. Your, your speaker microphone must not be working. You might want to call in. Lynn, we can't hear you. Why don't you try to call in and raise your hand? You could hit star nine if you use the phone number. Can we hear you? No, there's somebody else. Lynn, to dial in, if you use your telephone, call 1-669-900-9128. And then you'll need to enter the webinar ID. These numbers are also on the agenda. 8903, I'm sorry, I'll start over. 89010315985. And the passcode And when you do that, you can press star nine to, let us know you want to speak, but I'll also see a phone number come in because we don't have anyone else over the phone yet. Is your PC muted? Nope. Okay. All right, why don't we just? Why don't you email us, Lynn, okay? You can email us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carol Singer, followed by Nico Nagel.
Hello, City Council. I hope you will support this bill. That's all I wanted to say. I am on the homeowners council board, and you did hear from our president. But the main thing I'd like to say, I am so sorry that you have to put up with some of this name-calling such as silly and fear mongering and highly unethical and some of the other things you have been called. I'm just so sorry about that. And if people who want to discuss this measure and support it or not support it, if this is the way they have to put forward their cause, I, I hope you will ignore it. I mean, you know, well, if that's all they have to say about it, it's not an argument worth listening to. And I'm so sorry you have to go through this. I just want you to know, I'm not the only citizen that feels that way. You're doing a wonderful job, and I hope you will support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Any questions for the speaker? Again, thank you.
The next speaker is Nico Nagel, followed by Benjamin Levine.
Hi, there's city council members. Appreciate you all taking the time tonight. Thank you to everyone who showed up to discuss this as well. Speaking on behalf, sorry, I am Nico Nagel. I am the East Bay organizer for a group called the Housing Action Coalition. We've been working on housing affordability across the Bay Area for, for about two decades now. I, I just, I'll be quick. I think, I think most of the points have, have already been made, but you know, we, I want to reinforce a couple of things that have been said that I think are, are truly important. You know, one is that the housing crisis that has led to our affordability crisis, that has led to all of the other crises we find affecting us and our neighbors. Those are not things that started in 2017 with new bills out of Sacramento. Those are not things that started 10 years ago. We've, we've had, you know, we have not built enough housing for the folks that, that want to live in the Bay Area or are from the Bay Area even. And we haven't done it for, for about five decades now. And so there is urgency now in, in finding a way to create all those new housing units that, that we need for our neighbors, for new neighbors, and, you know, folks who will drive our local economy. That's, that is, that is still the goal here. You know, the, the RENA numbers are not meant to punish any city. That's why, you know, Lafayette isn't, isn't assigned all the RENA numbers. Lafayette's been assigned a, a small portion of those RENA numbers that, that really the state and every city in this state needs to partner to build. That's, you know, we find ourselves in the, in a statewide bind, in a region-wide bind, and the goal is to find a way to ensure that every city does their part. SB nine and 10 are just ways of making sure that happens. You know, I, can a bill be improved? Yes, any, any single bill can be improved. Any single bill can have a wider scope. It can take on, you know, more, more problems. I'm sure that, that's a fair point, but SB nine and 10 both take on, you know, strong, some would say the biggest issue we have in our, in our state and in our region in a way that, that's meant to add, you know, allow for cities to, to add gentle density. And ultimately to, to take a massive step. And actually, not that, not that large of a step, really, even toward building all the homes we need. And so I, I would, I would urge you to not support this initiative and to help find ways to, to build all the homes we need. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Any questions for the speaker? All right. Thank you, Nico.
Thank you.
Mayor, there are no other hands raised from new speakers at this time.
All right. Thank you. We'll close the public comment. So thank you. I do want to take this as a moment to answer some of the questions is that this initiative, all it does, we cities until 2017 had control over our land use and planning. we cities until 2017 had control over our land use and planning. And that's when the bill started based on the affordability, the housing crisis that started in 2017. And I know we have had an affordability crisis for a long time, more than that. But 10 years ago, when redevelopment went away, that was the only way that Lafayette got the money to build housing. And so it's, when you, when you tell cities that they have to build housing and you punish us when we don't, and we don't have any money to do it, that's the situation that we're in right now. And, and that's what all these state, all of these housing laws have done. And all I want to do with this initiative is for us to pick and choose those pieces that we like. We do, we've already adopted, you know, density bonus. We've adopted our own ADU laws that would have taken effect, had the state, the statement would have taken effect. But we wrote our own. I can't imagine us not keeping all the good ones, all the ones that are helping us actually create, you know, more housing. I believe our, our council will vote for those. And all this does is give us flexibility to pick and choose the ones that we like. And like, like Cheryl said, we will have at least a bit of a say on, you know, some of these projects that are coming through. Because otherwise, there's, to me, there's almost no reason for a city to exist. If we don't have control of our land use and planning, we might as well be county. I mean, to be perfectly honest, we've lost the one thing that is the most critical component to even, for the even reason to even form a city, is our land use and planning. So I, I urge us to, to consider this. If you can't do it tonight, we can bring it back and answer these questions. But I, I hope that you can consider signing this resolution. And I do, one of the reasons why I wanted to bring Jovita on here is they, when we get called racist for supporting local land use and zoning, I want to say that that is a, a false narrative, especially in this town, especially with this council. That is not the way we are going to have any of this pan out. But Jovita is the one who can answer that question far better than I can.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I can't help but take it personal. And it actually hurts very much when people say we're racist for wanting to support this initiative. I think I mentioned my parents were field workers. I grew up in East Oakland on a split lot where one of the houses was split, so three residences on one home. And I never thought of myself as racist, first generation Mexican, because I wanted a single family home. And it's, you know, I, during Halloween, I was out actually in Oakland. And all of my friends of color are actually looking to leave Oakland because they are now at the age where they want to have kids and they want to have space. And I said, well, if that's what you want, let's stop and think because single family housing is going to go away with SB 19. And, you know, someone can come in and build next door or whatever the case may be. And I, I find it curious that people bring up redlining because these bills really, I don't feel like it really started until people of color started owning family, single family homes. And it's just like, it's this dog whistle that is so upsetting. So I'm sorry if I'm looking really personal, but like, it, it almost makes me want to cry. Because what you're telling me is that as a person of color, single family housing no longer applies. I'm not, now that we're coming up, we're not good enough for that dream. That dream is no longer valid for us anymore. And the other thing is if you, someone talked, and I, I think his name was Jeremy Levine. He was great. I thought he was fantastic. I think Jeremy and I would have a lot in common. I'm actually probably more on your political side than you, you think. You said we weren't on the same political side. But, you know, he talked about supply and demand. So I actually work on elasticity models every day. I have not seen one elasticity model that will show me that adding these units will actually bring down housing. And the Turner Institute actually said, they think that, I mean, SB 9, for example, is so insignificant. It's really not going to, so, you know, insignificant. So if it's insignificant amount of homes, then you're really not going to move the needle. So why are we spending time on all of these bills that don't move the needle? If you care about affordable housing, let's actually do this. Take control back and do things as cities that our residents want us to do. Because everyone has kids coming back from college. Everyone has people that are moving up socioeconomic ladder that now qualify to buy a house to get a loan. So I say, please support the initiative. Don't listen to the dog whistles of it's racist. Because I'm going to tell you, there's a lot of people of color who are supporting this initiative. And they are actually offended by it. And they don't understand why now. Why are we doing this now? And at the end of the day, we all have to look at our voters. We all represent our residents in our city, not, I mean, and, you know, Nico, you know, I, I think it's great. Nico wants affordable housing, but we don't answer to Nico in San Francisco. I answer to Betty Sue in Brentwood. And am I making sure that the infrastructure that I can support with additional housing makes sense? Did I plan for it? Well, with these initiatives, I can't plan. I'm not going to know what's going to happen. And when our school suffer, our, you know, our road suffer, someone brought up water. I mean, Contra Costa Board of Supervisors is getting sued by East Bay Mud because they don't have water to provide to a new development that they approved in Danville. So water is a huge issue for California. So I just say, let's get all of our ducks in a row. Let's vote this initiative. And let's, let's figure out as cities what else we can do. Because we can come together, and I don't know if it's through League of Cities or not. But if we're serious about affordable housing, then we're going to have to own that. Because Sacramento's not doing it, League of Cities isn't doing it. It's up to us to do it. So things like putting in place 15, 20% inclusive. And I will also say inclusive because I don't like standalone affordable housing. If you grew up where I grew up, standalone means projects. People don't choose to live in a project. They're forced to live in a project. But if you give them inclusionary, they will choose the inclusionary any day over the affordable housing project. So that's another thing. But I'm sorry if I'm emotional about it. Just the racist thing really gets me. Because no one comes and really asks people of color who are living in a place that don't have parking. And when I park my car in front of my cousin's neighbor's house, I get my taillight hit out because there's no parking. So thank you for your time. Sorry, I'm emotional. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Pabita. All right. So I know if you have any other questions, you want to voice your concerns.
I, I'm curious how many signatures you have to date on how much the, not you, but the, the initiative has.
None, because the title and summary just came out a week ago.
Oh, okay.
And, and you have to take that and put that on ballots. And so apparently if proof is done, they may be here this week.
Okay. I, I just have a, a thought in terms of one of the things that one of the residents said about being on council and voting a certain way. And I just want to, want to say we, we do represent, well, at least I, and I'm sure we all lean this way, try to best represent as best we can, the scope of, of people in Lafayette. And we heard varying concerns tonight. So I myself would like more information. When I look at this initiative, I feel like there's not enough detail for me to feel comfortable about what are the unintended consequences that could arise. You know, cities being able to go about selecting the, the rules, the laws that they want to follow. How will that, you know, it just, there seems to be, there'll be a lot of impact going forward as well. So I just would appreciate the information that you have gathered, Mayor Candell. And as this is a voter initiative, I can see if, if council members like yourself want to obviously pursue signature, I think that makes good sense as an individual. But what you described before, that cities can't act as, as a body on it anyway. I'm, I'm not sure it's more of a perception than, you know, to, to move, move forward as, as far as voting on this. But anyway, I would, I myself would like more information.
Press my gregging.
So also, so thank you to all the people for the public comment. Thank you to Jovita for coming and also answering questions about, about the proposition in some of the public comments that we received. And I guess I'm sort of surprised that some of those people didn't come again this evening. But I did want to ask Mala to address, you touched on it a little bit, Mayor, but to address the idea that the council, we were asked in some of the public comments to support the resolution, but also to support 80 other communities or 100 communities who are signing on to support this and to donate ARPA funds or any funds from our, our, as a city, to help with supporting, I suppose dissemination of information. But Mala, could you answer whether or not that is actually something that we can do as a city in terms of spending funds on propositions and campaign?
Thank you, Councilmember Geringer. We cannot utilize ARPA funds. It would not be allowed under what we can utilize ARPA funds for. And you'll see that in a future agenda item in detail, what, what's permitted. And then likewise, we cannot use city public general funds on campaign purposes. That's strictly prohibited. So we would not be able to, to use city funds to make any donations to the campaign.
Okay, thank you. So just to make sure that we had that on, on the record. And then on the, on the ability to support the resolution, supporting this particular proposition, I would say at this point in time, I don't have enough information. But I'm not sure, based on the proposition process and with the title and summary and the information that you, you have to just have resolutions that have intent, which is what we had in our packet. I don't know where the, where I would be, I would feel comfortable with the implementation. And so some of it has been touched on tonight, the unintended consequences. We have a fiduciary responsibility in addition to representing our residents. We also have a fiduciary responsibility to pay attention to fiscal and legal liability. And I'm not sure what the sort of practical, I, I wrote some notes because lots of good information that, that people had. But I'm not sure about the sort of practical implications of we get to pick and choose which laws we want to comply with. And Mayor, you said, well, if it's something that we don't want to do and our local ordinances don't align with it, we win. Well, how do we win? What's the actual sort of implications of how we fight? Not fight, okay. But yeah, how do we decide? And how do we make the state understand we're not following that law? So fiscal, sort of legal, are we, you know, setting ourselves up for financial and legal liability? And I know that the Ledge Analyst Office, you know, good analysis of the bill did touch on that, that it's just unknown. We don't, we don't know what those fiscal, you know, the fiscal liability will be. So happy to have it come back, happy to research it more. But maybe just a skeptic of the unintended consequences of supporting something like this rather than working on finding solutions to funding for affordable housing, all of the other things that were touched on. So I'll leave it there for now. But looking forward to the discussion and, and where my other colleagues are.
All right, Councilmember Endury or Councilmember Quoc? All right, Councilmember Quoc.
Sure. Well, I'm not against it and I'm not for it right now, but I'm not ready to vote on it right now. Mainly because of the questions I asked before, which, and first of all, let me say that I take this very seriously. This is a constitutional amendment. This is not a stop sign. So the amount of due diligence that I've put in and I will put in is substantial because I feel the burden of 26,000 residents that are looking to five people to make the right decision on a constitutional amendment. So it is something that I would look at. I would definitely try to understand what's the implications before I would vote one way or the other. There are things I like about it, but there are things that I've pointed out that I don't know what's going to happen. This is not just about housing. All the discussion tonight has been about housing. But actually, it's not written for housing. It's written for land use. And, and you know that, I know that because it talks about a 50 megawatt power plant, which is sort of my world. So if it's 50 megawatts, that means below 49 megawatts and below are things that are contemplated in here. And it also mentions infrastructure like water, communications and transportation, but not energy. Right? And so that means energy is also part of this. So while we have a very dynamic discussion about housing, I think my value add would be to explore those unintended consequences in the energy area. Because we're voting for this whole package. We're not, we're not just voting for the housing language and getting a win on housing. It comes with everything else that we haven't even talked about. And I'm not smart enough to go figure it out myself. And so I would need, you know, I hope that since this initiative just came out a week ago, that it will go into the public debate in California. And we will hear universities having debates on this. We will hear many articles. I would be keen to see how the energy industry responds and surfacing all the issues on our behalf. And down the road, when I could see how that is coming along, then I could form better opinions on where to weigh in on this, if and when it's necessary. But today, I, I don't have enough information to, to, to make that. Because again, this is not just housing. This is, this is everything about land use. And it's everything going back to, not just to, you know, three or four years, but the entire basket of state laws affecting the use of land in our city. So again, I'm not against it or for it today, but I would need more time. And I'm looking to see the, the public discourse over the next few months. And then I would be better informed and better able to represent our citizens. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Endury.
I'd like to start with just a quick question. I may have missed the answer to this, but a question for the city attorney when you were in your discussion with Vice Mayor Geringer. Are we able to, is the council able to adopt a resolution supporting an initiative?
Yes, the council could do so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, this is, this is difficult because as Councilmember Quoc, Councilmember Quoc said, this isn't, this isn't a stop sign. This really has wide ranging implications. And I definitely admit that I'm one of the council members who in the meeting said, I wish I didn't have to vote for this. Particularly when we had to vote for a four story development backing up to the homes on Braga Boulevard. And that was very, very painful. And I was ended being put in that situation by state legislation. I'm also very supportable of affordable housing and wish we were able to provide more affordable housing. But I don't see the road to doing that through this initiative. At least I need to learn more about how this works to see if this is really going to make a difference. I see a lot of rhetoric in the press releases. See it in the preamble, but I just, I don't see the path to how this is going to create more affordable housing. So before moving forward, I would definitely like to see a more legal analysis of the impact of the initiative in at least two different areas. One is a, a general analysis that would cover the areas that Councilmember Quoc was talking about. Is this really only to be used by cities to override state land use and zoning laws? Or are there other laws that are amalgam of zoning laws and other laws or planning, lot, planning and other laws that would be caught by this ordinance? I think we need to know that before we go forward. And then specifically, I would like a second opinion on what this means for SEQA, the Fair Housing Act and the other acts. Cause I, I, I'm not persuaded by the opinion that we got. I would really like to see an opinion that was solicited by the, by Cal Cities. And I don't know if that's something on their agenda, but I would, I'd like to see that. I think we should consider asking our city attorney to provide us views on that. But again, if there is a less expensive way to do that by looking at what Cal Cities can provide, then I'd like to go with Cal Cities. And also on the wider analysis, if there's someone at Cal Cities who is doing that or so sponsoring that kind of analysis, I'd like to, to, to see that. And then specifically, I'd like to see an analysis of how we'd be better off with respect to affordable housing if this initiative were adopted. What is the upside from the affordable housing standpoint? And then there's the basic question, do we really want all land planning and zoning to be handled by cities? Now, I agree with the speaker earlier on who said, there is a hierarchy. I mean, we look to the federal government, we look to our, the state, we look to the county, we look to the cities, we all have our roles. I think this may come in as part of the analysis, but I would fear a race to the bottom in terms of loosening any sorts of requirements that the cities might engage in. I think there are times when the state does need to step in and say that if each city looks at itself as a silo and does what's best for the city, it's going to end up overall not being good for the state. And I think that's, I mean, we can fault the way this was handled. I think that the state legislators who passed these laws in good faith thought they were doing something that overall was better for the state. The problem that we see each time it happens is that there are specific things that they did. They, they weren't thinking about a city that has a hillside ordinance when they pass SB nine. They aren't sitting, thinking about a city that's got seven creeks running through it when they pass this legislation. You know, cities do know better, but their needs, I, I'm just concerned that this is overly broad and will put us in a worse position going forward with respect to trying to meet the challenges that the, the state faces. So right now, I'm not prepared to vote either way on this. I really do want more information. And I'm, I'm open to receiving that information and look forward to receiving it. So I, I don't know if the, we'll discuss more. Obviously, Mayor Candel, you, you still have your turn to speak, but I think if we made a list of what council members would like to find out and then, you know, move forward to get that information, we, I think we have time to do that. And, and I think we owe our constituents, really, we need to spend time looking at this because this would have such an impact on the entire state.
Vice Mayor Geringer?
Sorry, forgot one other thing, but to agree on, you know, having another legal opinion, but thank you for also commenting on how much do we want to, you know, spend on doing that. And so I believe that California cities is looking at, you know, will be looking at all the propositions and all the, you know, legislation so we can actually reach out to them as a city council also to find out if they're doing this so that we're not.
They are, they are. They're going to have a, they have a subcommittee and they've had two meetings. I'll have one more subsequent subcommittee of the housing committee looking at this. Yes.
Great. So I would like us to, as much as we can, take advantage of that benefit that we have from being members. And then I did have sort of back to, simply remember, back to Councilmember Quoc's questioning around the other land use issues. The one thing I had meant to ask about in the clarification questions was about, it does set aside exceptions that the state should have statewide concern and are in the best interest of the state for water, communication or transportation infrastructure projects. But then it carves out, for the purposes of this measure, it is the intent that a transportation infrastructure project should not include a transit oriented development project that is residential commerce, commercial or mixed use. And I was, I can, I, what, why did, why was that put in there by the, that, by the proponents and the supporters?
Why was that carved?
Back, yeah, I mean, if you want that to, the questions that we have coming here. But we think the state is better at, at all of these, you know, infrastructure, transportation projects, but we want to carve out housing, transportation oriented development around these projects. If one of you can answer that, but.
Yeah, it, all it does is, is a transportation, it's saying that freeways count, but the TODs don't. And that the cities can still weigh in. We go back, I mean, basically all this is, is we just go back to pre 2017, when cities and counties had exclusive rights in our cities and our counties. All we're doing is those laws, those housing laws that have come into play are if we've got our own that we developed over time, you know, in accordance with our, our community members, we get to choose if we want to override them. That's all this initiative is doing. It's allowing us, like instead of having AB 2923 saying, you have to do blank and blank and blank, we can go in and go, well, actually we think this would be better, you know? And it, it doesn't mean that we're not going to do any of those things. We get to pick and choose the ones that we want to do, right? And so it is returning, you know, as much local control as we want or don't want back. And, and I think our council would be pretty generous, you know, any of the good ones that are helping us with affordable housing, we would want. But our ADU law, we would keep, I can, I can't imagine us ever undoing that ADU law. I do imagine us possibly adding in a little bit, you know, one, you know, one review of the placement of the ADU. So you're not putting it right on the furthest part, you know, part that's going to invade your neighbors. And so, you know, you could put it 10 feet in. You know, I could imagine us putting in one review step, but not putting any other, you know, restrictions on building. That's all this is doing. It's nothing more and nothing less. And we can argue and get in the weeds like other people said, and I will bring back all these answers to all these things that you guys are asking. There already is another legal way in from Nosiman. I don't know if you know, Mala knows, they're pretty well known. They're, they've already weighed in on the SEQA as well. And so I'll try to get my hands on that one and, and send it off to you as well. But yes, I'll try to get all these back and get some answers. All right, Councilmember Endury.
Well, just to answer Vice Mayor Geringer's question, I clearly read that language that you cited as giving cities the option to get out of 2923. Me is why it was there and it's seemed pretty clear.
Absolutely. So, all right. So I don't think we could try to vote on it, but it's not going to go tonight. I will try to, we'll bring it back. I'll get answers and we'll bring you back. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, thank you. It was a very good conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, we'll go to item nine.
And thank you to Councilmember Mendoza.
Thank you, Vera. Take care. All right, let's go to item 90. You have your audio on. Hi, Barry.
Hello, Thomas.
Sorry about that. I lost you. Are you ready?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. I know you've been at it. I'm going to try to go through the staff report and try to look at a little bit of background and context and then seek some, some feedback and, and interaction from the city council if that's appropriate. So as the staff report outlines, the, the ARPA Subcommittee, which consists of council members and Dury and Dawson along with the city manager, administrative services director, Thomas Myers, myself and Sandra Meyer. We've been, been working diligently and, and so this is another opportunity to come back to the city council to give you an update and see some direction from you. So we've done a number of different things in terms of looking to, to put together a funding program for, for the ARPA funds that Lafayette received. And so they received the first half of the tranche back in July and they'll receive their second half. You'll see, receive your second half tranche in next July of 2022. And so to, to try to understand, you know, some of the needs in the community and, and, and looking at trying to come up with funding allocations, the Subcommittee has put forward another, another different tools and vehicles to, to do that and seek out input. So we did a business need survey. We had reported to you at a previous council meeting, the results of that. And, but that still is, that's business need survey is attached. If you have the opportunity to go ahead and review that. And then, so that was really to kind of seek out and get input from, from local businesses on the impact of COVID-19 and the pandemic on, on their businesses and what kind of negative impacts and then potentially what kind of help the city might provide to these ARPA funds. And then we also did a, a community survey. And so we had, we had brought that survey. The, it was put together with the ARPA Subcommittee with the two council members. And we had brought it to the city council and, and sought your direction, your comments and, and made some changes to that survey, but, but issued it. We were really, we're pleased with getting a pretty significant response from the, from the survey. We got 1,304 responses. So I, I thought that was a tremendous response in, in terms of, of hearing from folks in the community that were interested in this topic. And so the, the survey, there's, there's only six questions, but it was really tailored to be kind of easy for them to go ahead and complete and, and use the survey. But to get an understanding with some of the things that they thought were really important to the community and some potential ideas for using ARPA funds. And so I thought there was really some compelling things. I want to hit just a couple of things that were in the survey that I think we're, we're, we're telling. One is 63% of the respondents said they would participate in a community gift card program, which we've been working with the Subcommittee. So I think that, that shows that, that, that people would participate in that and use that. So I think that's a great thing. And so we're finalizing the structure of that e-gift card program. And we're actually meeting again tomorrow morning with the Subcommittee, but we're getting ready to take that to the next level. I know Thomas Myers is on here. He's been the one that kind of taking the point on that and working with that, rolling that out. And I know you've had some, some updates on that in the past. But that really is kind of meant to, to promote Lafayette businesses and, and get people to spend their dollars locally. So it's, it's going to give something to residents. But then it also has a rippling effect to help the business communities, which I, we all think is really important. And the next important point is that 79% of the residents have eaten at a temporary outdoor dining space in the downtown and that 82% of the respondents that, that have would like to see that outdoor dining continue. So I think that there are cities all over California right now that are, are looking at, they've had to go to these outdoor temporary dining when restaurants were closed, but for indoor dining, all those kinds of things, they had to make adjustments and pivots and, and all that. And so a lot of cities went with, with interim dining guidelines. And now some are looking at continuing those for a period of time. And so we thought it was important to get a sense of how the, the residents felt on that. So again, 82% of them would like to see it continue. And 62% would like to see those improvements enhanced and made better. And, and we can use ARPA funds to help with those improvements. And then we had a kind of a ranking of 11 different important considerations in the community. And, and, and some of these are eligible. Some of them are not, but we, but the Subcommittee really thought it was important to kind of use this, this tool to really kind of gauge a number of different things that the, that the residents were looking for. And so there's some things on there just to, to rank the importance of, of, of these aspects in the community and, and how they felt about them. And so again, the, the ranking is, is contained in the, in the staff report. But, you know, again, looking at, you know, from, from one to 11, a lot of kind of close groupings of, of those different tasks and, and, and the weights that they put on those. We, the Subcommittee also used two different community forums and they, and they participated in both those community forums. The first one was on October 5th and then we had about 20 participants on the Zoom call and we had 12 speakers. Some of those spoke, some of the speakers spoke more than once. And so again, we're getting, you know, feedback on, on what was important to them. You know, some of the things that they raised were supporting, support for traffic and pedestrian safety and improvements, near Lafayette schools, relief for small business owners, monies for a new downtown park, creek improvements, assistance at the Veterans Hall and then financial assistance for the Park Theater. There was a second community forum that was held on October 21st. We had 10 attendees on that one and we had six speakers and some of the speakers had the opportunity to, to speak twice. And the, some of the things that they talked about in, at that forum were backing again for the Park Theater, assistance to Lafayette Chamber of Commerce, and then assistance to, to local nonprofit organizations that were serving the community. ARPA has a provision in there that cities are allowed to kind of recapture some lost revenues. There's a very specific formula in, in ARPA and how you do that. So it takes in a very broad range of revenues. And so it's meant, it was originally meant to be easy to use for cities, but sometimes it gets a little bit complicated in what revenues are, are used and what are not used. And so, but it's a very specific methodology in terms of how you calculate that. It, it main, it doesn't probably show the, the true revenue loss that a lot of cities, um, have had. Um, and so I think that, um, uh, Tracy's gone through and, and looked at some of those kind of more true revenue losses and come up with kind of more of a, of a, of a, of a reduction in revenue of more like almost $3 million. And so, you know, I think the city is, should be, um, should be complimented that you, you've made the necessary adjustments to try to keep your balance budget and, and make adjustments and give, and kind of get through this thing. But the, according to the methodology for, um, the ARPA has, um, for revenue loss, the, the actual revenue loss for 2020, it's the only period where we have actuals and they can measure that, is $880,555. And so that money can be, um, can be, can be moved to the general fund and that can be used for any general government services, um, to help the city. And I think the intent of it was to provide more flexibility to just provide general government services that, um, that the city wants to do. Can't it be used for pension funds, rainy day reserves, debt service, but pretty much everything else kind of for general government services. We can, we can also, the city will also be able to measure revenue loss for 2021, which we're, you know, getting close to finishing up, uh, and then 2022 and 2023. You know, we'll have to see what kind of revenue loss that we'll have based on hopefully the economy continue to improve and not having setbacks and all those kinds of things. But those are more, um, kind of guesstimates in terms of what we think that are going to come up. The only, the only known that we really have is that 888, 880,555. And then again, ARPA allows various, um, kind of specific things that, that, um, ARPA funds can be used on and have to be eligible. Um, it can be used to help with, uh, dealing with the public health emergency, negative impacts, um, on households, small businesses, nonprofits, um, very impacted industries such as tourism, travel, hospitality, um, looking to those workers that are considered and defined as essential workers and possibility of premium pay. Uh, so that could be somebody working in a grocery store, healthcare worker, some of those kinds of things. Um, and then there's a category for, um, infrastructure investments, but ARPA is very, very specific about what those can be used for currently. Um, they can only be used for water and sewer and broadband infrastructure. So roads and bridges and, and sidewalks and, and some of the more traditional, um, infrastructure projects, um, are not allowed currently, um, as ARPA exists. So the, the subcommittee has, um, has worked kind of diligently on putting together some, um, some, uh, some, and again, the ARPA funds don't need to be allocated until the, until the end.
One second. I think we, we lost a couple of, uh, council members. Inadvertently, a whole bunch of people just left.
Yeah, not sure what's going on there. I'll watch and see if, um, folks come back.
Power outage situation.
Oh, I wonder.
Rather than, it's too coincidental.
It was very coincidental.
Okay.
Yeah. Rupe and Mala are gone too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So you no longer have a quorum.
We don't have a quorum.
I do see, I do see Mala as an attendee and I'll promote her, um, back in and I'll watch, um, for everyone else.
Thank you. Oh, we're down to 19 participants too. Huh. Is that down?
And the Rupe said she's lost her internet.
And Joanne, Joanne got bounced off as well.
Right.
Yeah. Our attendees have dropped to 12.
Oh. So there was definitely something that happened. I don't think we can continue without a quorum.
Hang for, we can hang.
Yeah, we can hang for a while. Um, I can check PG and E's. I don't, she didn't say it was a power outage though. I don't know if they're all on, um, Comcast or.
Right. That seems more likely was the internet. I, I did lose internet. I did lose my internet.
You lost your internet?
Yeah, but I, I do this. I don't even trust my internet anymore. I'm, I'm on phone.
Tethered it to your phone. Okay.
I just checked the, um, PG and E outage map. I don't see an outage listed for Lafayette yet. So this may be correct that it's affecting a, an internet provider.
Uh, I'll check for the Xfinity maybe.
That's what I'm doing right now too.
Um, Gina, yeah, Gina, everybody's gone. Yeah. So there's only two of you, uh, Councilmember Quack and. Yeah. And, um, getting a message that Jonathan Cattianeghi lost it in Martinez.
Okay, Carl is, has power and he's, did not have internet and, but he thinks he's got internet back. Right? Yeah, he never lost power, but he's going to try to get, um, his internet going again.
Oh, Thomas Myers is gone as well.
Yeah. Oh, everybody's gone.
Teresa's in the, on the phone and the attendees.
Thank you. Councilmember Garinger, when, when you can, can you unmute and confirm that that's, um, you on the phone?
Sure, I agree.
Thank you.
I am here. I have power, but somehow or other the internet went out. So, but I'm here.
Yes, multiple people seem to have been affected.
I was listening to that as I was figuring out how to raise my hand.
Um, so the question is if we can get, I mean, you have a quorum, but I would think you would want to have, well, the two subcommittee members are not on. And we lost probably a significant.
Tracy, do you have the dial-in number that you could type and then share it on your screen so that we can read it to people?
Okay.
Just put up the dial-in number.
Let me, let me go. Yeah, can you do, do you have it Suzanne or?
Yep.
I can, okay.
Well, I could read it. I have it. But I can't see anything, so.
Let's see. I'm looking here.
I thought it.
For someone. Um. Okay, hold on. Uh, where is it? So Suzanne, do you want to read it off or put it up there? Yeah. That might not actually be that large. So, um, if folks are able to see this on YouTube or, or some other manner, um, you could dial into this meeting, dial 1-669-900-9128. And then you'll need to enter a webinar ID and a passcode. All of, all of these numbers are on the agenda for the meeting, if you have access to it. Um, the webinar ID is 89010315985. And the passcode for this meeting is 294668. I don't know if I do that. Again, I'll repeat the dial-in information. Uh, on your telephone, dial 1-669-99128. And then you'll, uh, be asked to enter the webinar ID, which is 89010315985. The passcode is 294668. So. So we currently on the Zoom call have 13 attendees and we have four people watching on YouTube. That is still lower than before the issue.
The city attorney is, um, calling the mayor to discuss how we did our proceed because we can't really, if the public who wants to participate cannot participate.
Correct.
Plus we're missing two council members who are on the subcommittee for this particular item. That's a very bad connection. And, uh, yeah, some people that were here for the planning hearing also got dropped.
Hey Tracy and, and so Tracy, Wei-Tai and, um,
I can't hear you very well.
I'm sorry, yeah. Can you bring, can?
Mayor Kandel, you're dropping in and out. We cannot hear you very well.
Sorry, this is good as this is going to get. Um, can, can you stop sharing?
Tracy, uh, the mayor asked you to stop sharing.
That was Suzanne.
Suzanne, sorry.
Suzanne, I'm sorry. Um, is Teresa still on?
No, Teresa and Carl are both gone.
Teresa should still be on the telephone actually.
She is on the telephone, yes.
So Gina, if the three of us, Mala just told me, we have to continue this to tomorrow night. And so.
I am on the phone.
Oh, thank you Teresa. So if the three of us can, to just. That would be.
Can't hear you at all. Susan, can you turn off your video and talk maybe because we can't hear you?
Yes.
Oh my gosh.
You know.
So I, I think, oh.
We cannot hear you, Mayor Kandel.
And she's frozen now. Maybe if she could turn off her video, we could hear her. Or Suzanne, I don't know if you can do that for her.
I'll stop the mayor's video.
Oh. And now she's gone. Oh, there she is.
And I think what I heard her saying was that Mala is advising that we have to, or we need to have to continue the meeting to tomorrow night.
Correct.
Thank you, Mala.
What time, Mayor Kandel?
I will try for seven.
It's fine with me.
And so we can just pick this. Is that, uh, well, I've got our consultants here and this, can this be the first thing on the agenda?
Of course, yes.
Okay.
So sorry, guys.
No, it's, we're all.
You didn't cause it, did you Susan?
Oh, so, so, uh, Gina, okay, so Gina just said good with her too. I think she's listening.
And Greg Wolf has raised his hand in the, um, attendee room. Maybe let him in to see if he has anything to offer before we adjourn.
I need to vote though. We need to.
You probably want to vote before you lose anybody else to continue.
Yes. Okay, we got a motion.
I move that we continue the meeting to tomorrow, November 9th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
All right, we'll call the Vice Mayor Garinger.
Hi.
And Councilmember Quack.
Hi.
And I am here and the other councilmember not present. So we'll continue this meeting till tonight at 7:00.
Okay.
Okay, thank you guys.
Uh, I think Greg need, did you want to say something Greg before we go?
Uh, just that I have the city attorney on the line and was.
Oh, now he's gone.
Now you're frozen.
Other than Zoom or something.
Um, it's not clear that they can, but, uh, uh, Mala, they, they took action to continue it to tomorrow night at 7:00. Indeed.
So good night.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good night, everyone. See you tomorrow.
Thank you. Good night. Bye.